Ten minutes, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County Star on Monday, May 11th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone would please stand for the closing of meetings. Any public comments?
None, Your Honor.
Do we have minutes?
Yes, sir, right in front of your.
Okay.
I move that we have further minutes, if you can, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve, minutes, discussion. Honorable members, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Mr. Perez, on the vendors list?
Yes, Your Honor, new vendor list, we've got one new vendor, we reviewed that and we recommend it be approved.
No doubt, Your Honor.
Second, the motion, Your Honor.
Moving to second, discussion. Honorable members, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, the next thing is bills, Mr. Perez.
Claims, we have a fund, we have reviewed the claims and we recommend it be approved.
No doubt, Your Honor.
Second, the motion, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve, discussions. Honorable members, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The reports, they were sent to us, so in order to keep the number of people down to 10, they won't be here to present, but if you all have any questions, you can call the Department heads and get some explanation.
No problem.
Moving on. We have a presentation by Joanna Aiken Zero Mashwater and Source Hydro Panels. That's a handout that you have in front of you. They're going to do a telephone presentation. If you want, we can do it now, or if you want to wait till the end. You want to go now?
Ready, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me try to turn.
Hello?
Hi, good morning, this is Joanna Aiken for Zero Mashwater, how are you?
Doing well, how are you? We have a...
Doing well.
Yeah, you're doing, we're doing well, I've got you on the box, on the speaker, and we've got the whole Commissioners' Court listening in, so we're ready.
Great, well, I appreciate it, thanks for accommodating virtually, and I believe, as you mentioned, she was going to come down to or print out a presentation, do you have that by chance?
Yes, ma'am, we have it.
Okay, well, great, then I'll go ahead and get started and just try to keep this to a few minutes, but I appreciate you including me today on the agenda. I have been working with Commissioner Science's office since, I guess, the beginning of the year, and so I wanted to introduce our technology and the projects that we're discussing to the broader group, and also talk about some of the funding relationships that we have for potential grant funds available and cost to pursue that. So, to start, if you're looking at the second page here on the presentation, our technology, Zero Mashwater, has developed what's called a hydropanel. And so, a hydropanel, it looks very similar to a solar panel, but rather than creating energy, it's creating pure water just using sunlight in the air. And so, because it does not require any infrastructure, we have the ability to set up in very remote locations like areas of South Texas and the Colonia and provide an immediate solution to some of these water challenged areas that lack infrastructure or have water contamination problems. And so, as you'll see on the third slide there, we have the ability to pair our systems together to accommodate different water production needs. So, a typical residential household would have about two hydropanels for a family, and that would make about a case of bottled water a day, about a 24-pack of 12-ounce bottles per day per home. And then, on a larger scale, we can add more and more hydropanels, like you see in that third picture, to produce a much larger amount of water for what we refer to as a water farm, very similar to what you may have seen as a solar farm. And so, on the fourth slide there, as you see, the solution as it relates to the Colonia and other remote areas that we work within the U.S. and throughout the world, the technology is beneficial for many reasons, one being that it is local and the water being produced is right there within the county or within the Colonia, and so it allows for that local ownership of water as well as the transparency. So, there is a chip inside each of the hydropanels that allows our network operations center to monitor the panels real time, and so what that means is there's an unprecedented level of transparency. We know exactly what the water quality looks like, exactly what the water production looks like at any given time, and we can provide that level of monitoring and data as well. And so, we know that it is a very high-quality water, it's pure water from the start, there was no concerns with it ever being contaminated and having these two bad sort of filtration processes, it is pure water from the start, and it is resilient, so in the face of drought and other supply issues, the water still being produced every single day, so there is that consistent reliable supply. And finally, it's cost-effective, so what we've seen throughout the Colonia is it is dramatically cheaper than a traditional infrastructure development project for places that don't have the water service or the connection lines. This allows for an immediate solution, but also a more cost-effective solution as well. So, going on to the next slide, just to quickly highlight this amidst everything going on with COVID-19, we've seen more of an important clean water access in some of these areas that lack the water access are now more than ever disadvantaged as it relates to not only their sanitation abilities, but also the supply of the need of drinking water and the lack of supply, there is a lack of water delivery services such as water drinking and people that are unable to go out and purchase bottled water at Water Hall. So, the next slide here, this is an example of a nearby county that we've worked with, West County outside of Laredo, and two Colonia's within West County, one being San Pacheta, another being La Prisa, that both lack the proper water service there, and so we've worked with them to install some hydropanels at their community centers that people within the Colonia are now able to come, and so, drinking water, and we've done an initial demonstration about a year ago, and now we have a much larger project planned through some of our funding relationships that I'll talk about here in a second, to provide water for the entire Colonia. So, it's a population of about 1,500 people in San Pacheta and about 500 in La Prisa. The next slide here, this is what I really wanted to talk about in San Isidro within Starr County, and the area that's been identified as having water access challenges in a low to moderate income area. And so, the population that I've understood is about 700 people or close to about 200 homes without water service. So, many that are on private wells now have mentioned that they're testing, they have consistently high levels of contamination, and they're still not drinking that water. And so, what I wanted to dissect is the solution for San Isidro through how these hydropanels install. What we hope to do is install two hydropanels per home, which again would provide about a 24-pack of 12-ounce bottles of water a day and will provide for all of the total water needs of the households. And the way that we see how to do this on the very last slide here is through two different grant funding partnerships that we have, one of those being with USDA Rural Development, and the other one being with the Department of Agriculture. So, both of these programs prioritize first-time access to drinking water within the Colonia. There's a Section 306 program within USDA ARD, and then the Colonia Planning and Construction Fund through the CDBG grant within the TDA. The USDA ARD funding has a larger funding pool, whereas the TDA funds up to 500K per Colonia. Both of these are prioritizing first-time water access, and they're typically prioritizing financially distressed communities or those that qualify as low to moderate income. And so, what we have done with other counties is work to be the sponsor for the application, and the county typically is the applicant, sometimes the utility is the applicant, but I understand that there is no CCM, there's no water service extended to San Isidro, so there wouldn't be a utility relevant in this instance, it would likely be the county. And so, what I'd like to understand is potential interest to go after some of these sites together, and then what I've understood to be is the procurement process to take that off to initiate a grant application. So, without a pause, and see if there are any questions or thoughts as it relates to technology or the potential projects within San Isidro.
Yes, ma'am, this is certainly very interesting, and, you know, I have never heard anything like this before, so it is quite interesting. The only questions I have, when you say that it can produce a 24-pack of 12-ounce bottles, does it matter how arid or community is?
It does a little bit, and so those figures are based off of your location there.
Okay.
So, the more humid, the more humid the location, the more water production we'll get. So, basically, the average in your area is about the 24-pack of 12-ounce bottles. And so, because it uses sunlight and not just humidity, it's actually able to effectively produce water in very dry climates as well. For instance, we headquartered in Phoenix, Arizona, in the desert, and we still get a good amount of water there. And then, what we would do in very, very low, very dry climates, we would just add additional panels to account for the water that's needed.
Okay, now, the other question is, once this water is produced, do we need a storage, or the landowners, do they need storage to keep the water? Or is that within the same panel?
That's a great question, the storage thing is within the panel itself. So, each hydropanel has an internal reservoir built in, and so there's plenty of storage, so there'll be a 60-liter storage for households, and so it allows for, say, a family goes out of town, or there's days where there's a lot of water produced but not being consumed, there'll be that excess supply, so it'll be built up, and there's a, you know, 60 liters within that reservoir capacity.
Any other questions?
The cost, Joanna, this is Commissioner Science. The cost to install those hydropanels on residential, what are we talking about, how much money?
So, each hydropanel, $2,000. So, what we're talking about for each home would be $4,000 for two hydropanels, plus the installation and the shipping. So, what we see, if we're doing this at scale through a whole community, we anticipated being about 5,500 per home. And that provides the water for the whole life of the technology. So, you're talking about getting water for 15 years, that's excluding the cost of the water as well as the technology, and then typically, we provide a service package as well so that there's no unforeseen costs that is associated with operations and maintenance. But I think this is very low, it's just an annual filter change that we have our service providers go and do. And another benefit of the program that I just mentioned is we usually will train a local company to do the operations and maintenance and even the installation, so it adds to a level of local economic opportunity as well with local employment. So, we typically will try to find at least one or two contracting companies in the area that we can train to do this, and then we would contract with them to counties, and so that would, you know, add that layer of local jobs as well.
What's the life expectancy of the panels?
So, right now, they're guaranteed 15 years hydropanel technology, and then we've done extensive accelerated life testing, and we have proven that after 15 years, the panels won't stop working, but there'll probably be some internal parts that need to be replaced to maintain that and likely extend beyond the 15 years, but right now, we're able to guarantee the 15 years.
You mentioned grant funds?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned grant funds?
Yes, yeah, the two funding agencies that you mentioned were TDA and...
USDA.
And USDA, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well, certainly very informative, we'll get together with Mr. Science and Commissioner Science and our federal state programs department and see what we can come up with.
That would be helpful, and I guess it would be helpful to know at this point too what the typical procurement process looks like. I think what I've understood is there's always a pre-preparatory process before the grant application goes in, to be technically prepared by county, and then the application will go in if we did decide to do that, is that correct?
I would think so, yes. Now, what happens if some of the landowners don't want it? Are they forced to take it?
Yeah, that would be against the county, but I would assume that no, I think that it would be optional. Ideally, we would scope the project so the funding would provide enough for everyone that wants it. So, if there's a 200 homes, ideally, we're scoping it to get the funding for those 200 homes, and then if somebody does not want that, you know, the funding would be left over from that. I also think it could be interesting to, I know there's challenges right now with coronavirus, but to have some sort of community engagement to understand, is this something that they want? I know we had initially talked about earlier this year doing an event at the San Isidro, the Abel Gonzalez Community Center, which we were unable to do with travel being postponed. But we've understood from probably some people with the San Isidro that this is very intriguing, but we would certainly love to hear, is this something that they want? And I don't believe it would be something that would be required, certainly if it's a grant-funded program.
Okay, well, like I said, we'll work with Commissioner Science and see what he recommends, and then we'll work with our federal state programs also as far as quorum. Would you be willing to help us with the quorum funding?
Of course, of course, that's what we were hoping to do, is to work closely with you on the grant application, and then I know for both of these grant applications, they don't require a mask, but you have a rated point system for masks, and so our company, the Minnesota Food and Water Company, is able to provide that mask. So, we've been working with both USDA ARD and TDA for a little while now and have relationships to know how to structure those grant applications and who to talk to, answer questions, and go through that process. So, we would be very glad to allocate our resources to work with the county to go after that.
Any other questions? Well, we thank you so much, Joanna, for enlightening us on this thing, and we'll be back in touch with you.
That sounds great, thank you for your time, and I'll look forward to hearing from you and hopefully learning a little bit more about the process.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good day.
Okay, thank you, you do the same.
Bye-bye.
When the members came in here, they came to my office, they were very interested in the San Isidro area because of the source of water, yes? There's a lot of water contamination, but it's waterworks. And they had to travel to rural areas to buy from the windmills, we had planned, but then we saw, you know, the coronavirus, and we started doing the research. We wanted to do it, have anyone's license, start there, have people come and test the water, let this...
But it's only for drinking, right?
No, it's for... Depending on the panels, depending on the panels.
Yeah. It's ready for drinking.
No, 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 that's a...
The one panel, it produces the air and the sun.
The air and the sun.
See, it's only for two, it's only about $30.
If we put 55 times 2, we're talking about $10,000, we divide that by 15, and I'm probably wrong a little bit, but it's about $300 each.
The maximum, the maximum size is 100.
What's that?
The maximum, the maximum size is 100.
Yeah.
To provide that service to the people.
See, it's like applying for a sewer plant.
If you put the water, it's more expensive than it is.
We've been trying, and the water company doesn't want to...
At the water.
At the water.
It's only for grants, and it's not expensive for you. It's not expensive for what we pay.
No, if for first-time, more users, that would be San Isidro, there's money to make. Yeah.
Well, okay, somebody ever tried to make a estimate on how much it costs to run a water line on the way up?
Yeah, when I was, when I was still doing... When I was still doing engineering, we went and gave a presentation in San Isidro for a water treatment plant. Because, the wells, all of them have coliform. Yeah, because that's a... So, it does have a lot of... So, but when we went, I asked if they wanted, a lot of people didn't want it.
Didn't want it?
No. Because they said, hey, if I was taking, my grandfather took 100 years.
They don't have teeth, but...
So, they didn't want the expense. So, you know, we never did anything. But if they need it, they need it.
But it's only for taking.
Yeah, yeah, running water is...
At the city?
At the city, they have water at the south, yes?
No, no, no.
At the north.
There you go, man.
That's it, that's the furthest it goes.
A couple of hours from there?
It's not that far.
From there to the north, it's about 7 miles.
The thing is, the south doesn't have a water treatment plant.
No, it's a...
It's a...
There's boosters.
You need the storage, you need...
You were talking about 200 houses, right?
Yeah, and the other thing is, if all 200 houses were together, it's fine. But one is here, and one is there, and three is there, and one is there. So, the place...
400 dollars a year, that's the average, it's fine, for each.
But really, really, it's been a drinking, because the water that they get there, it's good.
It's good for bathing.
But it's just for the drinking.
If you get a grant, you're going to be free for a week.
I'll do a demonstration, but with the panels.
That's what I wanted to do in San Isidro. If they put two there, and tell them, look, the people that go...
If they say no, it's not free.
Yeah, the thing is...
It's rare that they say no.
And grant will not be 100%. The best you can hope for is about a 75%.
Or 75, it's fine.
Yeah.
Which in a million dollars would be 250,000.
A million?
About...
A million dollars?
If...
A melon.
If it's 200, 5,500, it's a little bit.
1,250. It's a good deal.
I was going to say, I'm going to go through the water well and...
The mosquitoes, the sky.
And here it's humid. We're going to take it, in the desert, there's no humidity in the house.
It's not how it produces, but they guarantee that the sky will be the water.
The sun.
The sun.
They probably use the sun for energy, get the...
Moisture.
The hydrogen and oxygen convert into water.
Please. I have another question, have they tested water?
Yeah, they've tested.
It's only for the light.
If there's nothing, then what? Then it's not open.
Well, okay, that was just a presentation. Yes, sir. Let's go on to item number nine. Oh, this is to extend the declaration for disaster on the Public Health Emergency. What I handed out a little bit, this is what we're recommending to pass on the new emergency management.
What's going to happen?
Look, this is what happened, the governor, this is his order. So, this order is here, plus a little more things that they were asking for. And I'll try and hit on some of the things that... The governor says that the face masks are not required. However, he says they're highly recommended, and that's what we're saying. Masks are highly recommended.
They're not mandatory.
It's not mandatory. If someone is walking, they can do anything.
But is the priority of the business not to wear a trap?
Yeah, and, yes, and thank God, most of the businesses here in Starr County have asked that if their customers not wearing a face covering, they can avoid it. So, that's helping a lot. We're not, can you call for some water?
What, oh, they didn't bring water?
No. The social distancing, también, you know, we must keep the distancing now. The one thing that he didn't make reference, but we went ahead and included it, because he didn't say it's forbidden, is on the 10 or more to a group. If someone has a party in the house and it's more than 10, the sheriff can go in there and find him, or the city PDs. We need to keep people away from each other, you know, I think that happened in Roma last week. One young man had it...
All the family.
All the family. And, I think it was in New York. One guy had it, he went to the clubs, 43 people got it that night. So, you know, they need to stay at home as much as possible. So, we did keep the groups to no more than 10. Yesterday, I saw on Mother's Day, on the kid, I had a party.
In the east, it's fine.
See, that doesn't help us at all. So, we kept that. Now, if it's from the same household, if all live in one house and it's 15, that is not a problem. Because they have contact every day, pero, other than that, like, no more than 10 people, they can be fined. The other thing is...
But if fined, they're going to take it, or not, or the Supreme Court?
Yeah, and I took, I didn't think that was right, especially when...
They're going to hold it?
Our senator, Ted Cruz, said... He said, it's fine, it's all right. It was the order that they passed, they passed it, law enforcement was enforcing it.
They imposed Patrick on him, and they're going to hold it.
Yeah. But anyhow, that's another issue.
Yeah, it's politics.
And now, they did open the salons, the beauty salon, the nail salons, the barber shops, it was all. However, we implemented an order, that if you have three puticians, you can only have three customers in the place of business at one time. The others have to remain in their vehicles or outside. And after they leave, they need to sanitize it, and then they can come in. The governor, he said, you can open, pero no, he said, what requirements? So, that's where we came in now. Everything's still at 25% occupancy. So, if someone has a restaurant, whatever, wedding chapel, you know, 25% of the capacity is all they can have.
25%.
Yeah, and starting...
Include the churches?
The churches, también, 25%, and the religious establishments, they need to leave. One person has people, and another not. Uno sí y uno no. Y luego, si, if you go with your family, all cannot sit together. But, yo, 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 I need to leave six feet between where I sit and your family. So, you know, they've got, it's got a lot of restrictions. Uh, starting, uh, on the eighteenth, because next Monday, the adult daycares and the children's daycares will be open.
Adult, ¿eh?
See, the adults, también twenty-five percent occupancy, in the vans, twenty-five percent occupancy. They need to take the temperatures of, of the people that are going before they get on the vans and once they're inside the...
So we can start opening the, the center.
Then, 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 you send them all in?
At twenty-five percent capacity.
Ah, well, okay, but so, so in our case, is there an option to open or not open?
No, you don't have to, you don't. The, the governor says you may open, but you don't have to.
Oh, yeah. They're not gonna go, somehow.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. ¿Cuánto comienza eso?
The next Monday.
El dieciocho.
Let me ask something, because we, we've been debating on that. Do the senior senators have to come in and wear a mask, all the time they're in the center?
Yeah, and that's gonna be a problem. Porque a lot of them have trouble breathing without any...
Eh, 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 lo que, ahí estamos, bueno, las cocineras y eso.
También.
Está, we have been discussing that, porque este, you know, para tener una máscara y estar cocinando el humo y todo, pues no puede rezar. So, you know...
Yeah, the only way is, if, if, well, especially with the elderly, you know, you need to be very, very careful.
Yo entiendo, pero al tiempo que le va a comer, ya tengo que quitar. Para comer, no creo que le vaya eso.
Yeah.
No, no. Bueno, rápido. So, other couple of high matters, they want to take the mask off to eat.
When they sit down, they need to, they need to be six feet apart.
Bueno, sí, van a estar face yards apart.
Sí.
Dice, dice, Frank, yo puedo ir, yo tengo... Que en los restaurantes, you go in there, you have to wear a face mask cuando entras. Ya que entras adentro, te, te sientas a comer, te lo quita.
Yeah.
Si te levantas de ahí para ir al baño o algo, you have to wear a mask.
That is correct.
So...
Yeah. Yeah, and, and the mask really no es tanto for us, it's to protect the other people.
Te entiendo, ya sé lo que te traigo yo, pero... Y dice, es... I mean, yo le dije que it's gonna be hard to make a decision, porque yo le dije que, comenzando mañana, que a la medida que fuera la, la comida, que si llegáramos a abrir y si acaso queda requisito que tuviera la máscara puesta, de tomar para comer, y cuando llegas la mañana, te tomas el café. Estamos hablando que le damos a almorzar, cuando almuerza, toma el café y hace... Me llevo una media hora o una hora sin tener la máscara. O le se pone el pingüino, se pone la máscara, para cuando hagas otra hora, por infeliz, sin máscara también son.
Pero tú tienes el centro abierto, pero te...
No, no, tengo, estoy dando comida. Yo tengo capacidad de twenty-five percent para tres, sixty-five people, sixty-two people. El twenty-five percent. Pero es como, estamos hablando, yo, lo más importante es la máscara, porque los viejitos van a, van a pillar. Pero la mañana llega, estás tomando una taza de café, pues va a estar con la máscara quitada. Que al muere, se quiera tu traje, con la máscara quitada. Bueno, ya acabaron, o le se pone el pingüino y lo que sea. Cuando viene la comida, es otra hora sin máscara o más.
You, it's como, you do not have to, to open if you don't want. Now, the, the mask or the face covering, especially on, on the elderly, is that before they thought, que the droplets, you know, when you sneeze or you cough, se iba, pues se caiva.
Yeah.
Now, they said, "No, they can stay in the air for an hour or two." So if you don't have the mask and you breathe it, it's coming, you will have contact.
Unless I'm forced to open, just I'm not going. Eight months que me quedan, I'm gonna continue feeding people that have it.
For, for the elderly, it's, it's very, very dangerous. Cameron County, Cameron County...
It's not affecting everybody, but you staff them to do that for the rest of the year.
Yo tengo, para que vienen, tengo unos veinticinco, treinta. Pero si voy a abrir y nomás cinco se van a abrir...
Debes decirme, no le conviene.
Yeah, y los, los centros, the, the, for pay, ellos también, they, they say, "We've, we've been having virtual meetings, car, como ellos." And, and they have the same concerns, as it is, before they were shut down. Dicen, "Ya venían, maybe forty percent." Porque los viejitos tenían miedo, o los hijos no los querían dejar.
Right.
So now, con todo esto, especially lo que está en Cameron County, the over fifty percent of the cases that they've had in Cameron County... This is, son los tratados, and, and almost sixty, sixty-five percent, what was it? De los muertos han sido seguros.
Yeah.
So it's very dangerous for, for that age group.
So qué remendamos, qué no abren. Ay, creo que se abren.
It would be bad.
Bueno, yo, yo... Te vas a tener cinco, seis, pero no te conviene.
Pues también, también, está poco delicado, ¿eh?
Yes, sir.
It's very daring, because, you know...
They have to, see, if you open up, and I'm not trying to scare anyone, that if you open up and one gets it, everything's gonna shut down.
No, the guy say, no.
Yeah, everything will shut down. And, y Dios no dirige que se muera, then...
What about the people that work in the, the outside?
Como los que...
Yo tengo que tener todo bien.
They must wear a mask, they must sanitize, and the temperature. When, when, when deals working with elderly, you need to take a temperature every day to make sure que no traigan canicula. Tanto de employee como...
Y no tenemos... Oye, oye, ya que estamos en, yo creo que Rose, Rose couldn't answer. El día que fui yo para... ¿Sabes lo que ocurre? The, the day before the operation, este, the gun temperature estaba ninety-one point one, ninety-two. Y le pregunto yo a ella, ¿cuál es la normal temperature? Y dice, "When we charge you, people over sixty-five and over, is ninety-nine point one or ninety-nine point seven, es diferente a la..."
A lo bueno.
A todo. Nomás que lo digo que no pudo llegar aquí, pero hay mejor...
Entonces, también va a ser menos.
De vermeras, eh? Sí, pues... Ya digan de alrededor, también está parado.
Está podido, está podido. Está sondeado.
Sube una temperatura.
La pared está sondeadita.
Do, do we have enough sanitizing stuff for, uh, cleaning the wardhouse? Because I know after June first, the Office of Administration already sent us a letter where we're gonna have to start having port again. Small numbers.
We have the disinfectants, we still have balms, so...
¿Esto cuál?
After June first, Mariposa, we'll just want this floating.
Yeah.
And I've been contacting just the police officer, we can kind of coordinate that.
Yeah, that...
Si no, los oficinas, ¿qué hacen? Mira, me mudo.
And, see, no, we, we, we have, we have that, what we haven't been able to get are the laser thermometers.
Laser thermometers.
I just ordered one more.
Yo tengo, yo tengo una idea que te parece, de central. Yo compré uno, eh, en vez, en vez de pagar, comprar.
Oh, yeah.
¿Vale? Van a cinco, tres, todo, ¿eh?
I ordered one at Walmart for sixty-some dollars, I didn't order any.
Well, we ordered some... We ordered, but judge...
I think every center could have one.
They, they did, they...
Los centros que tengan.
They don't have them anymore. After over a month, they were ordered at the beginning of April second.
Have we paid for that?
Yes.
But we need to get reimbursed.
They did, they refunded.
¿Mande?
Cuarenta momentos.
Sí. But maybe let's, let's try best buy.
Tú te quedas en cuenta eso.
Really?
Más antes.
También la ancha, no, ¿verdad? No, eso es de mando.
Uh, the swimming pools are now open, también in twenty-five percent capacity, those in little parts, but at twenty-five percent capacity. I had one person that called, que el capacidad del pool de ellos era trescientos, dije, ni parados adentro. I mean, they, they tried, all kinds of stuff, but... Uh, let's see, what, what else is, makes a change. Lo demás todo pretty much remains the same. Como digo, Rose, Rose did this, and I think she did one hell of a job incorporating todo esto into ours. Now, everywhere there's a blue thing, you can key into that and, and it takes you to the specifics de cada cosa. ¿Mande?
Bueno, my rose, no, 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 pero... Based on this and what I'm seeing, I don't think it's worth it, open it up, no.
I don't think it's worth it, the risk is too high for...
Pero el people, tiene buena cosa, exacto. Hay una persona que, que está aquí, porque lo tos, eh. Son orden, que tenemos de la cual.
It's, uh, it's really for their own safety.
No, eso es para la moneda, bueno.
And, no, but those were the orders, and I mean, but...
Bueno, si no...
There's things here that I don't agree with.
Nutrition program, they have their first, if you go, one of those, está bien, si quieres.
Yeah. There's a lot of things in here that I don't agree with.
Oh, sí.
Pero, pues son orden del gobernador. See, I mean, I have no choice, I have to do it. So, anyhow, that's, this is the order. It's not written in stone, si mañana han pasado, ven algo ustedes que dice, pues esto no me parece, we need to change, we have to change.
How long can the, uh, I'm pretty weird, ¿cómo?
Thank you.
¿Qué tanto tiempo?
Mira, mira, that's, and that's a very good question, and that's one of the things I disagree...
¿Qué hace a los meses, cuando, desde que empezó?
¿Por qué?
Afuera.
I disagree with the governor. The governor dice que if an employee feels he's in danger, he does not have to go work.
Even if he brings a doctor's queue? Porque como este que tengo yo, se ha dado negative for coronavirus, negative.
Yeah.
Pero no hay malo, tratarlo y todo, sí, lemas, sí.
Sí, pero... We were trying to... Si estuviera, si estuviera buenísimo. Si yo digo, tengo miedo porque tengo miedo, ahí hay mucho mulero, I don't have to go work.
Pues si, pero we, we try, ¿no? Y si andan, llamar un mil, ¿verdad?
Now, now, that's the thing, yeah, que si los pescas así, those are pronounced to fire. Porque when they're on COVID, they need to be at home. No pueden andar haciendo estos trabajos o, o pachanqueando.
And that's, I think we're gonna be, I think to discuss, I got something to discuss on that matter. Because a lot of people have taken advantage of this.
I, I think it's just employees taking advantage of the system.
Eh, ya.
Pero no probar todavía.
It is the same.
Yo quiero probar, okay. Pero no, no, es que...
So anyhow, this is the order, you know, I need, so you want to approve it or not, you need a motion.
I don't think they want it to approve.
A second motion.
Motion second to approve discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, okay, the investment report by Mr. González, it's in your pocket. I guess if you have any questions. I don't know.
No.
See, but I think we need a motion to approve it.
You never would have been any problem here, you told me.
Yeah, yeah.
I moved away from here. I'm pretty sure that any problem, you will approve.
Yeah. He was after this one.
Yeah.
I have a motion and second to approve discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item eleven is to approve a proclamation design, designating April as fair housing bond. Motion to approve, your...
Aye.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, item twelve is to approve the notice of election for the primary runoff election.
¿Qué runoff?
El de estado.
Uno.
¿En estado?
Uno runoff, ay.
¿En el estado, verdad?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, your...
Yeah, move it.
Moved in second, Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirteen is to consolidate proceedings for the primary runoff election uh, for early vote, election and early vote. There, there's only one runoff race, it's in the state. I don't anticipate that we're gonna have lines or anything like that. So we're, we're trying to do is consolidate, so we don't have...
Or whatever.
The court have one of them.
Well, election, it has to be in...
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
All countries need elections.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
I believe so.
But the user one, the user one, the server is quiet, it's out.
You know what, it, it might be right. Uh, it, general election is when you need to have it everywhere.
El runoff no tiene que estar, el único es en, en el general election, en, en November.
Yeah, but when they use a runoff, they serve on the south.
En el election day, no, vamos a abrir cuatro guys.
¿Le iban a get John on the line?
Yeah.